Okay, ten o'clock. So let's call to order the City of Ocean Shores Library Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Well, I believe that I am not giving the Library Foundation presentation because I was there in September and I, if I was supposed to go in October, I didn't know that, so.
There was no meeting. There was no meeting.
Oh, there was no meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm not, I don't have anything to present because I presented it last month, what I did in September.
Okay.
Okay.
We can make it up.
Well, we'll consider that, your report. Okay, any other changes or additions? Okay, may I have approval of the agenda?
No. Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have public?
None.
No. Couldn't see you be on there. Okay. Okay, no public communication. Uh, approval of the minutes. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Jane.
And I was being invited.
I'm sorry.
Good morning, ladies.
Yeah.
It's more, it is more of a, a request than communication, so I go into a lot of community meetings and I get feedback and something that I've gotten over and over now and just recently at Catherine's, uh, council chat that she does. There's a lot of people that don't know how to navigate the city website. Or know how to get any public records or even get into the calendar, a lot of people don't know that when you get on the city website too, that you can sign up for alerts, that every time they put a notification on, you'll get either, you can do it via email or text. And so the library always does such a good job with the iPhone, you know, how to use your iPhone, how to use this. So I was just wondering if you would think about putting on an informational on how to navigate the city website. Um, I think it would be a really big plus on getting information out there, if you could even get people, hey, the calendar is here, you click on this, you can get the agenda, you know, when the meetings are, you know, what events are. Um, I, I think it would be a really big plus for some of the community that have, that, that don't even know how to navigate it yet, but, uh, so that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for the input. Okay, approval of the minutes for October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I just had one question about the minutes and that's on page two. It says, uh, children's activities included Legos for reading.
That's the town.
That's the town, oh Lego, oh, okay, I, I didn't understand what that meant, okay.
So I, I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Keitha, why haven't the rest of us report?
You received the stats, any questions on the stat? Then, um, I encourage you to take a look at the display case, it's Dietrich's Potter, it is absolutely adorable. And the lady that has never, we've known her for years, but she's never, um, displayed these. And each of the little figurines are, go with the actual book and it is so well done, it's adorable. So be sure and take a, a gander at the Dietrich's Potter collection. Um, Art in the Library is, I love this Art in the Library because we have her for November and December because she's bright and cheery and just fabulous, so take a look in the Art in the Library, it's Margaret Erb. It will be here both months. Book Group is doing the Classic Botany of Desire by Michael Holm. This coming up on November twentieth. The quilt is a witcher quilt and Nick is doing a class on the fifteenth on iPhone basics. He did Android last month and had our best turnout for the computer classes yet. So that was really good. And just a couple of other things, Dungeons and Dragons is going quite well. And as Alex mentioned, Nico has this adorable little Lego board set up with a tractor on it and the kids come in and when they check out three books, they get three little Legos and they're building stuff on it. And it's right behind the window there, so it is absolutely great. We have our second virtual reality class on the eighteenth. We had twelve show up from the first one, which is the max that we could handle with the equipment. And Teen Advisory Board is meeting on Monday. Teen Zones have been very popular, we're holding them on Mondays, so the kids can have different activities throughout the whole of the library. And we have coming up our traditional holiday book drive, so if you know anybody that like to donate, um, new children's books from baby to sixth grade, not wrapped, we're gonna have a wrapping party on the twenty-ninth. And, um, we would like them to put on our, under our tree as part of our wonderful Santa. And I was telling everybody a little before the meeting, he's coming again, he's absolutely fabulous, he was wonderful, wonderful, I can't say enough about him from last year. And it will be December eighth, a little early, but we get everybody first this year. Uh, the friends, as usual, are sponsoring it, Nico's doing a really fun little ornament with the kids. Uh, and then pictures with Santa and the new books. And then they'll write a letter to Santa, there'll be a mailbox set up in the kids section. And lots of fun cookies and apple cider from the author fair that we have left over, so it's gonna be a real, a real gala event. So be sure and tell everybody that Santa's coming on the eighth, it's at four o'clock. And virtual reality is coming up again and Build a Tower, I told you about, oh, the other thing, I might be stealing somebody's Friends of the Library thunder, but friends are having a book sale, special book sale, the day after Thanksgiving and then Saturday after Thanksgiving. So please, um, support that and we're always taking donations. Thank you, Susan, for all your donations. And other than that, it's just business as usual. Question?
Great. So where are the letters to Santa? Linda?
Yeah.
I just, I've always been curious about them all.
Maybe easier.
I actually get quite a few.
Really?
Yeah. She didn't answer the question.
Doing this for forty-nine years.
Okay, if there's no questions for Keitha, uh, let's move on to old business. And we have a revision to Policy one point two, Division Mission. And, um, as we were reviewing the policies last time, the only change to that was the first paragraph because it had originally been approved in twenty twenty before we did the second patron survey. So the, the first paragraph was changed to match the strategic plan to say that we have, uh, we undertook the strategic plan process in both twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. And that we, uh, updated it to say that four, that nine hundred and forty-one surveys were completed. So are there any other changes, everything else in that was the, the same?
No.
Good.
Yeah. Thanks for the update.
Shall we?
Do we vote on it?
Yeah, no, we have to vote on it now and, and then, uh, we will change the approved date.
That's one of that.
Yes, at the top.
Thank you, ma'am.
So motion to approve the change.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll need to change, will you do that, Keitha?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait till they're all then.
Okay.
And then we agreed last meeting that the verbiage would be reviewed and approved twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Everybody agree on that?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I needed. But not till we're done.
Okay.
Heck, I'm not gonna nag, um, Cam, the webmaster. And by the way, though, on that same note, he did go through, I sent him all the updated versions, so there's none of that wonky response stuff, there were quite a few. Nice. Come to find out, so those should all be corrected.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Susan, for noting that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, City Council presentation, uh, November twenty-seventh. Is you, Susan? Okay, and we do not do December, so shall we wait till next meeting to figure out who's gonna talk in January? Is that okay?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. All right. New business. Um. It looks like a policy review event on this.
Oh, I just noticed that too.
Yeah, it was on that, the show one I thought, that we looked at.
It was on the one I sent Sarah.
Yeah, yeah, it was, because I had.
Yeah, because it's not on the one I have either.
Okay, well, uh, let's.
About that, I didn't read the one she sent out, I just keep my copy. So it says, review policies six through ten, view on webpage, and then I gave the webpage and said it's under about, uh, slash policies. Oh, sorry, I will double check her from now on.
Okay, and, uh, so let's make an amendment to the agenda to add that, the policy review.
And, and you did mention that last month.
I did mention it last month.
So, yeah.
I, I. Yeah, and I was going by the agenda that.
Yeah.
Um.
That I sent.
Yeah, that I sent. So I, I only printed it out that, that night before. Okay, so we will add policy review, uh, six to ten to the, um, the new business. All in favor of that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. Ma'am.
Aye.
Aye. The queen can be called ma'am.
That was mine.
Um, okay, so the first policy is confidentiality. Policy six point zero. Um, any changes to that?
I need to back up a second. Nicole, can you adjust the agenda and have Sarah do a new agenda for the?
Um, I don't, I don't know all that works.
Try to send her an email then?
Yeah, I'll text her if you.
Okay. So text her and then tell me, then let her know to contact me if she needs updating on the new business. Because she has my original agenda that I sent. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys, sorry.
Okay. Okay, any, any changes? Uh, by the way, if you look at the, uh, the first paragraph, it talks that, um, we are committed to the privacy and safeguarding access to patron data. And it is the policy of the library in accordance with Revised Code of Washington, RCW forty-two, uh, there's fifty-six through ten and, uh, twenty-four, fifty-six, three-ten. Um, uh, so I did go ahead and I checked the Revised Code of Washington to make sure that there were no changes to it and that, uh, what we quote from the RCW was still accurate.
Good.
So, um, and what the RCW still says is any library record, the primary purpose of which is to maintain control of library materials or to gain access to information that discloses or could be used to disclose the identity of a library user is exempt from disclosure under this chapter. So basically it preserves the privacy of library records that, uh, um, unless a, um, law agency.
And has a subpoena?
Yeah, has a subpoena or other court order.
Yeah, probably need a little close quote after that, no voice. Under this chapter.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. I will, I will add the.
Thanks for checking.
Yeah.
Thanks for ferreting that out and checking.
Okay, and then the next definition just defines what a library record is. And that's, uh, registration records, circulation records, material request lists, reference interviews, database searches and download records. So, and those are, hang on. Those are standard. So are there any questions about confidentiality? No.
Third-party vendors also sign things like Libby couldn't sell someone's, you know, information or transfer, right? Libby or, or?
Canopy?
Can, you can't do that?
I don't know.
No?
Okay.
I would assume not.
Because they're not bound by the library.
We'd have to check the contract that we have with any third-party vendors to see if there's confidentiality bugs.
I'm gonna do that.
If you, if, next time you're talking to one.
Never.
A quick email, just to mention. Because I know that their own, like, I, I know that Libby and Canopy are both owned by KKR.
Right.
Which we don't know what they're doing.
Right.
So it might be kind of a nice thing to just, you know, in this day and age.
Anything else related to confidentiality? I think, uh, yeah, the answer should be in the contract. At least that's where they, they used to put it. Okay, um, next policy, seven point zero, so the first one, we have, uh, a grammatical error of, uh, missing end quotes. Uh, the next policy is intellectual freedom, uh, seven point zero. And, uh, any questions about that? And this basically says that, uh, we subscribe to the Washington Library Association Intellectual Freedom Statement. And that the bullet points underneath it were adopted from, um, and, and slight, and slightly, they're just slightly edited from the Washington Library Intellectual Freedom Statement, and that also has not been updated. Um, I did have a, a question though, where we have, the Ocean Shores Library believes that parents and legal guardians have the right and responsibility to guide their own children in the exercise of their rights of access. Uh, when I looked at, I got nine point five, I thought it would be nice to have our wording consistent. In nine point five, I'm jumping. In nine point five, we have parents or legal guardians are solely responsible for their minor uses of children, with, of their minor children's use of the internet.
So we should have sole responsibility?
Well, uh, that, that's a question, if we want to match it, because this is just for, um, you know, general use of the library. Um, and I, I also wondered about believes, or do we wanna say, um, Ocean Shores Library either, um, upholds, maintains, affirms, I kinda like affirms that parents and legal guardians have the right and responsibility, rather than we, we believe.
So we go, oh, I saw the firms that parents and legal guardians have the right and sole responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
If that works.
Yeah, that kinda goes with what you were saying on the other.
Yeah.
Policies.
Legally, one can't be less restrictive or more restrictive than another one, so seven and nine have to be equally, uh, expressed.
Right.
Yeah, you know, when we adopt these, we adopt them one at a time, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's when you're reading them as a group, you find those kinds of discrepancies. So does that?
Mm-hmm, yes. If the O, the OSL affirms that parents and legal guardians have the right and sole responsibility to guide their own children and in the exercise of their rights of access. Okay, was, was there anything else in that policy? Anything we want to?
Second.
Uh, well, do we wanna do that or do we wanna bring it back to?
Probably bringing it back.
That, that's normally what we do, is we'll make the changes and we'll bring it back to read it again. Make sure I don't make any errors in the corrections. Okay, um, are you okay so far, Keitha? Did you have any changes? No.
I'm really shy, you know?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Fine.
Uh, policy eight point zero is services. And this policy, uh, just summarizes the services that we give here. Reference readers advisory programs, technology assistance, online services, computer services, photocopying. So.
I'm speaking up.
Yes, I, yeah, I have a couple of questions here too.
On, on the bullet points, it starts thousands of popular ebooks. On my copy, it's the first bullet point under eight point four. It should say thousands of popular ebooks, comma, audiobooks and movies are available for checkout.
I, that's, that was actually one of my questions, I had, uh, do you wanna add video or movies?
Just movies is good enough.
And which part are we talking about?
I can't, on eight.
It's eight point five, that Keitha is talking about.
Eight point five. Is it, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's eight point five. Oh, there it is, okay.
Okay, so how, how would you like it to read?
Thousands of popular ebooks, comma, take the word out, and audiobooks, ad, and movies are available, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
And that covers Canopy.
Okay.
We will not mention Canopy and Libby in any of the specific services.
Not in, not in the policy because we may change vendors, you never know.
Yeah, and actually I had a, um, a, a question, if we go back to eight point four in technology assistance. Uh, because we do mention Microsoft products there.
Right.
Examples include using a computer in general, Microsoft products, and I was wondering if we would wanna say software products instead of Microsoft.
Yeah.
And I had a question on eight point five. Um. All of it says you have to have a valid library card except for, and I don't do this, so maybe you don't have to have it, but where it says free public domain audiobooks are free for anyone to download or to listen to on their electronic devices. You don't have to have a library card to do that?
No.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions or, or changes on that?
And I'm assuming where you said that, that was some of the glitches were fixed, but wherever it says C policy nine, that's kinda weird the way that is. I'm sure that's what you're talking about right now, okay?
Right.
Uh, so what about that under eight point six? Do you not like that reference too?
No, it's just, it's weird the way it's.
It's the spacing.
It's, it's, I mean, it's just one of those glitchy things. See, where it's, the C is way over here and then policy nine is here, I mean, it's just, it's just probably something that was fixed, but she said that he fixed the glitches.
Okay, but I think we should double.
Yours is like, like the C is right away over here, you don't, yours is.
No, mine didn't like that.
Oh, okay.
Some of them are.
Okay. I took this one off of the library one, and that's how it was.
Yeah, don't use the bio quote.
No, I didn't use the library one.
That's why.
I used the library one.
Specifically on the agenda that didn't get done.
Okay. Yeah, because mine, mine looks okay.
I'll check on that, Jenny, just to double check, but I think it's okay.
Okay, yeah, if you would check on it, so I don't know if it's the different software that we're using to download or, or what, or different versions, uh, because mine looks okay, mine's all the way to the left.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving on to, uh, nine point zero, computer services.
Two changes.
Okay.
What do you, my staple's not on mine, nine point, nine point three, computer access.
Mm-hmm.
Is that with me? Second sentence, patrons without current library card may purchase guest pass. We eliminated that a long time ago, so totally scratch that.
That whole sentence, that's okay.
Yeah, we don't charge for guest pass at all.
Okay.
And then nine point eight, I didn't know, and I, I, I went back and forth on it, so I thought I'd throw it out there. For the wireless internet wifi, if you want the hours we currently have on there, or if we should just leave it off in case we change it again, and I couldn't make up my mind. Because right now you can use the wifi from six in the morning to ten at night.
And, and I had a question there as to whether this was still true, because I didn't think the twenty-four by seven. Um. I mean, that indicates that it's available twenty-four hours a day.
It doesn't say twenty-four seven.
I think this is a little bit like saying Microsoft as against, uh, software, we want to keep it general.
Yeah, so why don't we just say the library offers free public wireless internet access?
That's what mine says.
That's what it says, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say twenty-four seven.
I don't have twenty-four seven either.
Well, that's interesting. Somehow I must have gotten an old one because mine has twenty-four seven.
No?
Okay.
So then we agreed to not put the hours. Okay, good, thank you for helping me make my mind.
Okay. I will check where I downloaded that.
And is there a problem on nine point three saying Cassie software, considering that could change too, or is that always gonna stay that way?
No, it can change, there's a lot of companies out there that do the same thing.
So what, should that be changed instead of saying Cassie software?
Just say software is used?
Yeah. That works.
And then, um. Yeah, in the first sentence, and boy, I don't know why I have a, a different copy, mine has August twenty twenty-one. Because I thought I matched them against the library, uh, about what was on the library website. Um, I have OSL offers patrons access to Microsoft Office and publisher software.
Uh, yeah, that's in the first paragraph, it does say that.
Yeah, and I think when we did this, I'm not sure that publisher was included in Microsoft Office, but right now Microsoft Office has, uh, five products that includes a publisher, uh, as well as access. So do we just wanna say Microsoft Office?
Then we're not being consistent with not using names.
Yeah, I know we're not being con, consistent, but I think that probably, um.
When we did this in twenty-one, it was two separate purchases.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm assuming it was back then.
Yeah, so that's why we did it.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Yeah. But right now, it's uh, Microsoft Office includes publisher and access.
Right.
So, um. That's why I was wondering if we just wanted to take out publisher. Because it probably is important to say Microsoft access, uh, Microsoft Office as opposed to. Um, you know, someone expecting Apple.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Cause we, yeah, I think that's probably valid, yeah.
Yeah, so should we wanna be generic and just not mention Microsoft? And say that OSL offers patrons access to spreadsheet, Word and publishing software?
I'll do that. I, I think it makes a difference whether it's Microsoft or.
Yeah.
And it is.
And we just do Microsoft here, correct?
Right, yeah.
And not the Apple stuff.
This is where we would like Microsoft in.
Cause there's, Google has their own set, and then Apple has their own set, but we don't offer those. I mean, you can get those through your Google.
Yeah.
But most people who know that, know that. But it's nice that they have access to this, cause that's costly.
Yeah, it is costly.
If I sell this, it's nice to know you can plug in there and make a resume and.
Yeah.
Do a spreadsheet. So I think that Microsoft should stay there.
Yeah, well, let's just say Microsoft Office then, and then however, they change what's included in that, then we don't need to worry about it.
Just cross out publisher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
And this is why we review things.
Right.
Even though. Policies are not most people's favorite thing.
Except me.
Except me, yeah, well.
You get along well to do that.
Policy one. Nine point seven, uh, Keitha, can you just take a look at that and make sure that that's current?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, to check. And nine point seven is um, where it talks about how much we charge per page. So I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, okay.
That was current. Okay, and uh, number ten is the meeting room policy. So it looks like we have enough minor changes and, and all of them to bring them back for approval next month.
Absolutely.
Okay, policy uh, ten point zero, meeting room use.
Nothing on my end.
Well, I, I had one question, and that was on uh, under ten point one, free use. We have meetings, events, programs must be open to all persons who wish to attend. And then in ten point four. We have all meetings and events are open to the public except private meetings.
Well, that's because there is a discussion about what a private meeting is further up. I think, cause I kinda questioned that too, but then I saw that there's a definition of what a private meeting is.
So that seemed a, a little bit contradictory to me.
I don't think it is, because if you're paying for the room, cause you're using it privately. You should just be able to invite who you want to, if you're paying money to rent the room. So, because it says under ten point two. Individuals or organizations not able to meet the criteria for free use of the meeting room may be eligible to rent the room for a fee.
So should we say in the first part, all free meetings are available to everybody? Or how would we end word, worded?
It does say that somewhere, that if it's, if you are having. Meetings, events, programs must be open to all persons who would, to attend.
And that's what I'm saying.
Oh, that's in the big, oh, yeah, right, oh, yeah, okay.
Or, or, or do we say in ten point four, all meetings and events are open to the public except. Um, private rented meetings or something like that. I, 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 I think, you know, I agree with Alex, I think there needs to be a little bit clarification of that. Otherwise, it, it reads a little contradictory to me.
Or we just say free use meetings, because ten point one is free use.
Yeah, ten point one is for free use, yes, I mean, the definition is free use.
If you just, if we just put free use meetings, events, programs must be open to all purpose, all persons. So that distinguishes that from the rental fees, and then we could say, um.
And then it's, then that ten point two is rental and fees, so they're divided out.
Not able to meet the criteria for free use.
Yeah, right.
Just sort of distinguishes that one.
And if you read the whole thing, it distinguishes, that's when you take little pieces out, this where it doesn't. But if you read the whole thing, I think it flows pretty well.
Okay, so are you suggesting a change to ten point four, Susan?
I was actually suggesting a change to ten point one.
Okay, where we have free use meetings.
Yeah, paragraph four, just to call them something like free use meetings, events, programs.
Yes.
Must be open to all persons.
Okay.
And it kinda harkens back to the name of it.
I mean, that works, that works for me. Does it work for?
What do you guys think?
Yeah, you were talking about the, where it said, right now, it just says meetings, events, programs must be open to all people. Free use, yeah, even though it's titled free use, but yeah, many people tend to not read everything, yeah.
Pound the point home.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I think that is it for today.
Should we go through the rest of the next, the next month, or are we gonna just, just kinda go with these first?
No, I think we should go through, you know, the idea is that we review all of them. So we have policy eleven through fifteen.
Next time.
Under new business and under old business will have six through ten.
Yes, yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, any other changes or suggestions on going through those?
And I did have it noted when we complete this process to update the front page. On the T O C, so that it, it's not, has, doesn't have all those extra words.
Good.
I just haven't done it yet.
Okay.
Can we make sure also that the font for all the policies is the same?
I did that already.
Great.
I can already go through and check that, but when we get to final, I will recheck everything. Cause I'm gonna have to go to every policy and add that, uh, approved and blah, 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 state, yeah, okay.
Okay, so um, just to clarify, Keitha, the changes that we made today, though, I will make on the policies and I will send them to you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to reports. Friends of the library, Alex.
Well, the meeting of the friends of the library will be on the thirteenth. So this month has not happened yet. But just to re- reiterate what Keitha was saying. There was going to be a big sale the weekend after Thanksgiving. That's it?
And Kathy's still looking for volunteers to work it, though. And you can get a book buck. Does everyone know what a book buck is?
Yeah.
Very cool.
Okay, and Jenny already gave her report. And um, and I spoke to city council and uh. And uh, really, all I did was um, summarize the November. Events that were happening, and, and, and there were a, a lot. Uh, a- as always at the library, but there was nothing to add as to what the, the board was doing. It was all the wonderful events that the library was, uh, was and is feeling in the month of November. So, Jeff or Jenny?
Well, I mail account, I did see um. That I got a spam message from Keitha. With, with, with the um, email address being E D U office at Virginia media dot com. And it said, are you available to spare me some of your time? And I did call here, and I think you were on vacation, but um. Michelle told me that obviously that was not your email address, which I knew it wasn't, and um. She said, I'm pretty sure that if she needed to talk to you, she probably would have called you. So anyway, we're starting to get a bit of spam, but we're not getting anything else, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen, getting the.
Okay.
You can see the spam thing either?
No, it's, it's, you're going, taking care of it.
No, I left it on just because I, well, and I just wanted to bring it here today. So I don't know why you're not seeing the same things I'm seeing, that's really weird.
I wonder if it didn't get set up, right?
Cause you are looking at the library.
The library.
Board of trustees, not just the board of trustees.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't know, um. I, I have no idea. Anyway, so that's, that's what we're seeing spam at this point.
You probably have a better spam filter.
That could be.
Oh, that might be it.
Be surprising. No, I don't get very much spam, so that might be it.
Yeah, that might be it, okay.
Well, you know, the idea is to have it available for someone to, to use. If they, you know, don't wanna come to a meeting, or they don't want to, you know, talk to Keitha or, or, or one of us. So, uh, just another option for communication, yeah. Okay, our next uh, meeting date is December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Part of the week, it will be our last meeting of the year.
Yes.
Where did it go, the whole year? I don't know, it goes, goes fast when you're. Anything else for the good of the order? Anything, and uh, always remember if there's anything to add to the agenda, um. Let Keitha know, or let me know. Uh, Allison, before we adjourn, do you have anything to add?
It's, it's nice to be here in person.
It is. If they go in first.
Just thank you for all the work you guys do. I mean, the library is, I love it. It's great, and I know how much the, the kids appreciate all the programs you have for them. Cause talking about some of the homeschool parents and then some of the kids in the community, they love all the stuff you do, and we appreciate it.
And I thought the author fair was awesome.
Yeah. Door count for the author fair was three hundred and eleven.
Wow, that's cool.
It was really cool event. I, I thought I'd walk into the hill. Spiral sandwiches and everything.
I told you it was gonna be a gay office.
Yeah, I think all the authors were hav- were having a good time too.
And they all signed up for next year and a few more people, other authors signed up as well, so.
Oh, God, we signed up for.
Yep, we're ready.
There you go. Pretty soon, we're gonna have to have it at the convention center. That's a good, well done.
Thank you. It was fun, had a really good team helping, about six volunteers from the friends. Plus staff. It was, it was a lot of fun. And like you said, it was noticeably upscale.
Yeah.
That's what we wanted.
Next time we'll have a champagne fountain.
Are you volunteering?
No, I got a kid that, that is, is banned.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you were saying what?
Well, I'm considering having a buffet luncheon next year. Just to step it up a bit, see where that goes, but that's just in my head.
Okay, anything else?
Did I move that we adjourn?
You may, okay, I, I still move. All in favor? Okay, see you all next month. Nobody ever, I'm waiting.